I would like to thank the mayor council and our entire community and organization for supporting us. We know that as planners, it is our job to help manage change in the community and do it in such a way that it is inclusive, brings in all points of view, you know, creates a comprehensive blueprint at the highest level for the city. And then to make sure that projects meet those visions and values that are determined. And I know our planners work very hard every day, but we do it with the support of you all, the community and the organization. And I'd like to accept this on behalf of planning, community development, but also all the many, all the many people who provide input into the development review process. Thank you so much for your recognition.
Thank you, RT. Would any member of the council like to say a few words? If not, oh, council member Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give a special word to all of the nonprofits that work on defeating cancer. And give a special recognition to the family members and to those who have struggled with cancer and not been able to defeat it in their own case. I think we all know individuals in our own lives who are either still struggling and haven't gotten to that five-year mark or who unfortunately never made it to be able to have that worry-free future. And many of those individuals spent their remaining time spreading the word and doing their utmost to see that others would have a really significant chance. And so I want to give them a special recognition. And I think that we all think of those in our lives who have been in that category. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We know other members of the council wishing to speak. We will proceed to 3.2 National Community Planning Month Proclamation. And if someone will help me elevate RT. We are happy to be joined this evening by Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director RT Shrevostova to accept this proclamation. Proclamation reads, whereas change is constant and affects all cities, towns, suburbs, counties, boroughs, townships, rural areas, and other places. And whereas, community planning can help manage this change in a way that provides better choices for how people live and work. And whereas, community planning provides an opportunity for all residents to be meaningfully involved in making choices that determine the future of their community. And whereas, the benefit of planning requires public officials and citizens who understand, support, and demand excellence in planning and plan implementation. And whereas, the month of October is designated as National Community Planning Month throughout the United States of America and its territories. And whereas, planners work to improve the well-being of people living in our communities, taking a comprehensive perspective, which leads to safer and more resilient, equitable, and prosperous communities. And whereas, the American Planning Association and its professional institute, the American Institute of Certified Planners, endorse National Community Planning Month as an opportunity to highlight the contributions sound planning and plan implementation add to the quality of our cities and environment. And whereas, the celebration of National Community Planning Month gives us the opportunity to publicly recognize the participation and dedication of the members of the Environmental Planning Commission and citizen planners who have contributed their time and expertise to the improvement of the city of Mountain View. And whereas, celebration also gives us the opportunity to recognize the many valuable contributions made by the professional community of planners of Mountain View, which includes the Community Development Department staff, and extend our heartfelt thanks for the continued commitment to public service by these professionals. Now, therefore, I, Lucas Ramirez, Mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Community Planning Month in the city of Mountain View in conjunction with the celebration of National Community Planning Month. RT, would you like to say a few words?
I would like to thank the mayor council and our entire community and organization for supporting us. We know that as planners, it is our job to help manage change in the community and do it in such a way that it is inclusive, brings in all points of view, you know, creates a comprehensive blueprint at the highest level for the city, and then to make sure that projects meet those visions and values that are determined. And I know our planners work very hard every day, but we do it with the support of you all, the community and the organization. And I'd like to accept this on behalf of planning, community development, but also all the many, all the many people who provide input into the development review process. Thank you so much for your recognition.
Thank you, RT. Would any member of the council like to say a few words? Vice Mayor Hicks.
Well, as a city planner myself, I have to say a few words at this point. There are few people I value more than a good city planner. They, and I include Ms. Shrevostova among them. I had the pleasure of taking a downtown tour where she was one of the featured speakers and got to let know a little more exactly how she thinks about making a great downtown. And I have to say, I came away with even more respect than I had before. I also know that, and frankly, I think that's what city planning is all about, great public places. We get to do our own interior decoration, but city planners are the people who give us great outdoor public places. And I just wanted to note, I had seen Supervisor Semidion, who I think went to the same planning school that I did with his hand up a moment ago, maybe to speak on the previous issue, but I would welcome him to speak on this one as well. And there may be other great city planners in the, you know, as members of the public as well, but I don't have my glasses on, so I can't speak, honor them personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say that I entered my political career as a member of the Planning Commission, as many of you did too. And it was an incredible education in city planning. I know that there's much, 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 much more I could know. But one of the things that I think is very important about city planning is recognizing that it's one of the city services that we provide that makes a huge impact on all of our residents. And it's one of the things that we can do well, and for the most part, we have done well. And it makes our community just much, much better for all of us to live there. So, thank you so much to the planning department on past and future.
You very much. Any other members of the council wishing to speak? Very briefly, I, the mayor has the opportunity to decide which proclamations to put on the agenda. And I haven't initiated very many of them, but what I found out about this particular one, I really wanted to do it. Because we have taken time to recognize the important work other departments have done. I'm not sure we've done this proclamation before, and it's particularly important to me because your job is particularly hard. You know, development is challenging in any community, lots of different ideas and perspectives about growth and how quickly or slowly it ought to occur, different ideas about design. And it's really challenging, I can imagine, balancing all of those perspectives, you know, not only, you know, within the community, but even among the seven of us. And I think it is important to take some time to appreciate the work that you and your department have done for the city of Mountain View very well. Thank you very much, RT, for joining us to accept the proclamation. Now, we will proceed to the final proclamation for Compassion Week. Something that we don't often have in the world these days. We are happy to be joined this evening by Malia Pires, with Reach Potential Movement, Executive Director, to accept this proclamation. The proclamation reads, whereas, the city of Mountain View is a community that embraces, promotes, and values compassion. And whereas, the city of Mountain View recognizes the values of acts of compassion that are performed by
There, there are few people I value more than a good city planner. They, and I include Ms. Shrevostova among them. I had the pleasure of taking a downtown tour where she was one of the featured speakers and got to let know a little more exactly how she thinks about making a great downtown. And I have to say, I, I came away with even more respect than I had before. I also know that, and frankly, I think that's what city planning is all about. Great public places. We get to do our own interior decoration, but city planners are, are the people who give us great outdoor public places. And I just wanted to note, I had seen Supervisor Semidion, who I think went to the same planning school that I did with his hand up a moment ago, maybe to speak on the previous issue, but I would welcome him to speak on this one as well. And there may be other great city planners in, in the, you know, as members of the public as well, but I don't have my glasses on, so I can't speak, honor them personally. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schew Walter.
Yeah, I was just, I, I was just going to say that I entered my political career as a member of the Planning Commission, as many of you did too. And it was an incredible education in, in city planning. I know that there's much, 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 much more I could know. But one of the things that I think is very important about city planning is recognizing that it's one of the city services that we provide that, that makes a huge impact on all of our residents. And it's one of the things that we can do well, and for the most part, we have done well. And it makes our community just much, much better for all of us to live there. So thank you so much to the planning department on past and future.
You very much. Any other members of the council wishing to speak? Very briefly, I, the mayor has the opportunity to decide which proclamations to put on the agenda. And I haven't initiated very many of them, but what I found out about this particular one, I really wanted to do it because we have taken time to recognize the important work other departments have done. I'm not sure we've done this proclamation before. And it's particularly important to me because your job is particularly hard. You know, development is, is challenging in any community. Lots of different ideas and perspectives about growth and how quickly or slowly it ought to occur, different ideas about design. And it's really challenging, I can imagine, balancing all of those perspectives, you know, not only, you know, within the community, but even among the seven of us. And I think it is important to take some time to appreciate the work that you and your department have done for the city of Mountain View very well. Thank you very much, Arti, for joining us to accept the proclamation. Now, we will proceed to the final proclamation for Compassion Week, something that we don't often have in the world these days. We are happy to be joined this evening by Malia Pires, the, our, with Reach Potential Movement Executive Director, to accept this proclamation. The proclamation reads, whereas the city of Mountain View is a community that embraces, promotes, and values compassion. And whereas the city of Mountain View recognizes the values of acts of compassion that are performed by community-based organizations, nonprofit agencies, and individuals every day to foster a kinder and more connected community. And whereas Compassion Week brings people together for a week in October through volunteer opportunities and acts of service. And whereas the vision of Compassion Week is to build a strong, compassionate, and empathetic community by creating service and learning opportunities for individuals to expand their understanding of local and global needs. And whereas all members of the Mountain View community, regardless of age, background, education, gender, religious, religious beliefs, lifestyle, ability, or skills, are invited to contribute their talents and energy to participate in Compassion Week projects and activities and help make Mountain View a more caring and kind community. Now, therefore, I, Lucas Ramirez, Mayor of the City of Mountain View, along with my colleagues on the city council, declare the week of October 15 through October 23, 2022, as Compassion Week 2022. And I encourage all residents to unite together in service to our, in our community through participation in Compassion Week activities. Additionally, I would like to acknowledge and appreciate the sponsors of Compassion Week, the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation, the County of Santa Clara, sorry, County of Santa Clara Supervisor Joseph Midian, and Los Altos United Methodist Church for their efforts to bring community members together in service of others and offer thanks to every community-based organization, nonprofit agency, and individual whose efforts strengthen our city and improve the lives of our neighbors. Malia, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Ramirez, and the Mountain View City Council for the honor this evening bestowed upon Reach Potential. I'm honored to accept the city of Mountain View's compassion proclamation. And we stand, you know, we're just one of the many, many wonderful organizations that are hosting projects this week and are doing amazing work in our community. Miriam Swipster defines compassion as sympathetic consciousness of others' distress together with a desire to alleviate it. And Mountain View historically and throughout COVID-19 has really shown that they are a compassionate city. They have really elevated the needs of the least of those in our city through their financial support, through the decisions they're making with programs like the Safe Lots. And we're really, really honored to be able to serve the city of Mountain View's inhabitants. And again, we are in the company of many wonderful, wonderful organizations. And we're really honored to accept this award. So thank you, each of you.
Thank you very much for joining us to accept the proclamation. Would any member of the council like to say a few words? If not, thank you again, Malia, for joining us. We will now take public comment for the presentation item. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the presentation items listed on the agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. And the first speaker is caller Indian797.
Yes, good evening, and thank you for your precious time. I wondered, I don't know if it's relevant to the subject you were speaking, if you can help me with a rental issue that I have with a long list I was waiting for. So finally, the property called me. But it looks like we are not communicating well. I don't know if, at the same time, they have a deadline tomorrow. But I, I did call and today they were mentioning a price that was outrageously higher than what I thought to be, and it usually was, for low income. So I don't know, is there any way that could generally tomorrow go and say a few words and keep this going?
So unfortunately, the city council isn't able to respond, but please reach out to city staff and we'll make sure that someone is able to provide the assistance you're looking for. Seeing no other members of the community wishing to speak. So that was for the presentation items. We'll now move on to the consent calendar. These items will be approved by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion. Would any member of the council like to pull an item? Being none, would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on any item on the consent calendar? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. Seeing no members of the public wishing to speak, a motion is in order. Councilmember Abi Koka.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to move the consent calendar, including item 4.2, adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Mountain View authorizing and continuing virtual meetings of city council committees, boards, and commissions pursuant to AB 3661 and making required findings. Thank you.
Mayor, for your music. Yeah, I'll second that much.
Thank you very much. There are no further questions or comments. I'll ask the city clerk to start the roll call vote.
Councilmember Abi Koka?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamai?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes.
Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
You very much. We'll now proceed to item five, oral communications from the public. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed to speak on any topic during this section. State law prohibits the council from acting on non-agenda items. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on an item not on the agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on your screen. I had thought that this was where Supervisor Semidion was interested in speaking, but perhaps he had to depart. I'm not seeing any members of the public wishing to speak. So we will proceed, oh, right, council, sorry, Bruce England, two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really fast. I just saw this news release, maybe it was from today. City calls on state's local investment advisory board to responsibly invest in companies that support a sustainable environment. I was very happy to see that. So thanks to members of the city council who made that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Kavita.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm calling in as a resident of Mountain View, as a member of the Public Safety Advisory Board, and as the Director of Communications at the Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation. I just wanted to share with the council and with folks that are listening what I'm hearing from our community that has been affected by the enforcement of Measure C. I am hearing quite dire stories of the people who no longer have regular access to clean running water or restrooms. I'm hearing about real fear and uncertainty from our neighbors who are being affected by the enforcement since a week ago Saturday. And I understand that ticketing is also started with $170 as the minimum fee for violation of the 72-hour rule. And that is beyond the means of many members who are in the community of, are, as residents of RV vehicles. I would like to see the council and the city of Mountain View continue to show compassion and humanity as we go forward in this. I would like to request folks to look at temporarily expanding safe parking at Shoreline Lot B and enabling the most vulnerable members of the RV community, those without operable vehicles, the disabled, seniors, and families with childrens in schools, to have priority to those, to those potential spots. I would also like to request that the folks who are in charge look, step back enforcement of the 72-hour rule, which is causing a lot of stress and which was not originally, an original part of Measure C. I think it's really important that we all band together and show compassion for our neighbors in this matter. Thank you.
You very much. The next speaker is Dean Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Dean Miller. I'm a resident of Mountain View. I'm also the Executive Director of Los Altos Mountain View Community Foundation. And Kavita and I both work together and share the similar concerns about members of our community who are being affected by the implementation and enforcement of Measure C. It is our responsibility as a community foundation that directly serves the city of Mountain View and its residents to raise awareness about issues that directly affect its residents. And as we are about to celebrate and inaugurate another Compassion Week, I implore us to think about the word compassion and what we can do to support vehicle dwellers who are being affected by the enforcement and being required to move, and in some cases, facing real significant uncertainty about their dwelling, their future, and how this community will care for their existence and ability to live here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to provide some comments.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Caleb Adams.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I just wanted to mention that I think Measure C is essentially criminalizing poverty. I want to agree with the prior two speakers and say that we should not be criminalizing poverty and we should be taking care of those who are hurting the most in our communities. You know, how are we gonna claim that we're doing anything to help homelessness and the unhoused if we're literally charging them crazy fees for just existing? I'll end the rest of my time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dan Dayback.
Hi, my name is Dan Dayback. I'm a resident of Mountain View. I live in Old Town Mountain View. I'm commenting on Measure C and the unethical enforcement of the 72-hour rule. We are criminalizing poverty by doing this. Also, it states in the, the Mountain View parking regulations that it may be considered an abandoned or get towed if a car has been left on the street for 72 hours. So how is this rule being enforced? Are we looking at older vehicles? Are we looking at vehicles that have not been cleaned? In Old Town Mountain View, there are Teslas parked in the street longer than 72 hours. Are these vehicles being ticketed? If we compared the vehicles that have been ticketed under this rule, what is being targeted? Are they older vehicles or are they new ones? If someone goes on vacation and leaves their car on the street, are those getting ticketed? How is this rule being enforced? I, I urge you to think about this, especially during Compassion Week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alex Brown.
I just want to agree with them, what they said.
Thank you. The next speaker is Malia.
Hi, Malia Pires. I'm a resident of Mountain View, and I too just wanted to chime in regarding Measure C and just share some of the stories that we're hearing out on the street. Some of our senior neighbors are unable to access water. Several of our vehicle dwellers are unable to move vehicles because they don't have the funds in which to be able to do that. There's a long waiting list for safe parking, which is a wonderful program, and it's working for our inhabitants. As a voter, and a registered voter in the city of Mountain View, I don't believe that the voters were, or were aware that there was going to be a million dollars to pay for signage, that 80% roughly of our streets were going to have those signs and not be eligible for parking for wider vehicles. I also don't believe that people understood the fallout when these vehicles now are starting to park all throughout the city and their neighborhoods. I don't think that there is any awareness or, you know, dialogue around that and what it really meant when Measure C was enforced. I believe we are a compassionate city. We, we have a compassionate council. And I think we're, we're just seeing now the ramifications of Measure C enforcements that no resident, I believe, really thought was going to, to happen. We, I don't believe anybody doesn't want to see a senior citizen have access to water and bathrooms that, who lives in his RV, that's his home, right? So I don't believe that was the intention of the voters. You know, just, you know, when we think about Compassion Week, I just want to invite our community to go to siliconvalleyvolunteers.org and sign up for the hundreds of wonderful projects that many nonprofits like CSA, like Hope's Corner, to just join and, and join together to execute and elevate compassion in our city. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we'll now end non-agenda public comment and move to item 6.1, firearm safety legislation. Purpose of this, of this study session is to receive direction from council on options for additional firearm safety legislation. And if staff wouldn't help, would help me elevate the, here we go, panelists. All of the staff would need to be in the presentation. Feel free to promote to panelists. Assistant City Attorney Diana Fazelli will present the item. Whenever you're ready, Diana.
Good evening, council, I'm sorry, good evening, Mayor and council members. Diana Fazelli, Assistant City Attorney with the City Attorney's Office, here tonight to present on the study session regarding firearm safety legislation. As background, since January 2020, the council has adopted two firearm safety ordinances. The first prohibiting the possession of firearms on city properties and also requiring safe storage of firearms in homes and in vehicles. On June 14th this year, council directed staff to return to the city council with additional firearm safety legislation options. I'm sorry, having some technical difficulties. There we go. The city has existing firearm regulations, which are listed in this slide. The first two are the ordinances that I had just mentioned that have been adopted since January of 2020. Additionally, the city has in its building code the ability to require additional security measures on buildings that are used for weapon ammunition or explosive storage. The city prohibits discharge of firearms within the city. And it also prohibits the possession, discharge, or shooting of any firearms within city parks or recreational facilities. As additional background or provide some information on what's going on at the state and local level, in July of this year, Governor Newsom signed 13 new state laws relating to gun safety, most, which was, the impetus was the recent mass shootings, most notably the one that occurred in Uvalde, Texas. Those for 13 state laws went into effect immediately upon his signature. And in addition to that, four new state laws were signed by the governor last month and go into effect on January 1st of 2023. And just last week, the Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors supported the expansion of, of law enforcement efforts in the county relating to gun regulation enforcement with a specific focus on confiscating guns from those individuals who are prohibited from having them. And that leads me to our option number one. Option number one for council to consider would be modifying existing ordinance or adopting a new ordinance to expand the locations within the city where firearms are prohibited. In June of this year, it's US Supreme Court decided the case of New York State Rifle and Pistol Association versus Bruin. In that case, the Supreme Court decided that a provision of New York state law that required concealed carry weapon or CCW license applicants to show proper cause for license issuance was considered, was decided as unconstitutional under the Second Amendment. California has a similar provision, or California's is good cause rather than proper cause. And the immediate effect of this case was that that provision was also invalidated. And so essentially, this makes it more difficult for local jurisdictions to deny CCW licenses. One of the steps that the city can take, and which is being considered by other cities, is prohibiting the possession of firearms, including those being carried by CCW licensees from sensitive areas. So this would expand our current ordinance that prohibits firearms on city property. So this would expand our current ordinance that prohibits firearms on city property. The state legislature attempted to respond to the Bruin case with SB 918, which would have created a robust framework for processing CCW license applications and also would have included additional restrictions on CCW licensees, including those restrictions on what's deemed as sensitive or what the state legislature deemed as sensitive areas. However, that bill failed by just one vote. The law is still evolving post the Supreme Court case. And so this option would require our office to conduct additional legal research to determine what is the city's capability of preventing individuals who possess valid CCW licenses from carrying their gun in certain locations. It's come to our attention recently that the state of New York actually did impose these restrictions on CCW licensees in sensitive areas, including some areas that were consistent with what the state of California attempted to do with SB 918. And those laws were challenged in the district court in the state of New York. And many of them were deemed as unconstitutional. And so it remains unclear whether that case will be appealed to the federal circuit courts. But so additional research on our end would be required to ensure that the sensitive areas that we designate are within the confines of the new Supreme Court case. Additionally, we would be monitoring state legislation. It is within the realm of possibility that a bill like SB 918 would be introduced again because it did just fail by one vote. And we would be monitoring if that occurs to prevent any preemption issues. And finally, we would be monitoring any sort of litigation, including the New York, the state of New York case, to ensure that what we propose is legally viable for the council to consider. The second option would be to enact a new ordinance to create a licensing framework for firearm dealers. This would require firearm dealers... In order for them to be able to conduct business within city of Mountain View, they would be required to obtain a license from the Mountain View Police Department. Though that license can include certain requirements, such as requiring liability insurance. It could also prohibit the firearm dealer from conducting business from their home. And also, we can require the firearm dealers from conducting business... Sorry, imposing the locational restrictions on these firearm dealers, meaning they would be required to be a certain distance away from areas that in which children congregate, such as schools, daycares, and parks. If council does direct staff to move forward with this option, the staff also requests council to provide direction on how to address those existing firearm dealers who conduct business from their homes and/or conduct business within a certain distance from schools, daycares, and/or parks. So that would require direction on whether we should grandfather in those existing firearm dealers, meaning they would be permitted to continue to operate as a firearm dealer conducting sales of firearms at their specific location or amortization, which would be providing them a certain period of time after which they would have to cease operation and comply with the city's new regulations regarding firearm dealers. This slide is the table that's also provided in the study session memorandum with the correction that Los Gatos does prohibit firearm sales as home occupation. So this X was missing in the study session memo, but I've corrected it here. So it provides kind of the layout of what some of our neighboring cities have in regards to the options that we've provided for you. And finally, these are the questions that staff is seeking council direction on. First, whether council wants to expand locations where firearms are prohibited. Does council want to impose a license requirement for firearm dealers? Then, does council want to prohibit firearm sales as a home occupation? Does council want to restrict firearm dealers from being a certain distance from schools, parks, and daycares? If so, what distance? And then if council provides direction to move forward with numbers three and four in particular, does council want to amortize or grandfather in the existing firearm dealers? And depending on council direction, the timing for bring back does vary. And with that, I'm available for any questions that the council may have.
Thank you very much, Diana. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Shaw Walter.
I'm interested in the efforts that are going on throughout the county to do this on a regional basis. I think that that could be a very effective way to go. So could you explain that a little bit to us?
So countywide, so I am aware that other cities are considering the sensitive areas type of ordinance. However, it is still being analyzed by those relative cities, respective cities. For example, in Sunnyvale, they did have a similar study session just in August. And their council directed their staff to explore that type of legislation. And as for licensing, as the table noted, some of our neighboring cities already do have a licensing requirement. So we would be consistent with some or most of our neighboring cities in that respect.
I understood from my discussion this morning with the city attorney that there were efforts going on between all the county city attorneys related to the concealed carry. And so although it hasn't necessarily... That effort hasn't necessarily expanded to include the things that are mentioned here. The group has gotten together and is talking about gun safety. So it does provide a potential... I mean, I just wanted to ask about, do you see that as providing a potential platform for collaboration on this topic?
Yes, absolutely. So the city's attorneys in our county are meeting about the concealed carry weapon permit issue. And then specifically, we will be discussing the sensitive areas legislation. We haven't gotten into the details yet, but that is somewhere where we will be collaborating.
Okay. And also, what is the sort of relative value of having this kind of legislation be done on a more regional than a city-by-city basis?
That's a good question. I'm not sure if there's any value on a risk perspective. However, it does provide from a public safety perspective. You know, if all the cities in the county have similar restrictions on possession of firearms, you know, it would provide perhaps, you know, those who would carry their guns illegally more... Give them more caution as to do that in Santa Clara County versus, you know, not being able to do in Campbell, but being able to do it in San Jose, you know. So I'm sorry, I'm not able to...
Okay. I think we get the concept, which is that it would be, you know, a stronger prohibition and probably more effective. That's what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So first, I'll acknowledge this was, is a study session. And ordinarily, we go to the public for comment first. I had a lapse in memory. City Attorney Logue, you had your hand up. Did you want to speak to something?
No, it's okay. It was addressed.
Okay. Would the council prefer if we just continue with questions and then to public comment after, since I've already started that? Councilmember Lieber, you're up next.
Thank you, Mayor. And maybe we could ask the community that will ultimately comment about the efforts that they've been making over the years to try to get a unified approach to this. Because I know that the protections that are present in Palo Alto, for example, have been there for more than 10 years. And I had a question about the issue of amortization. Can we pursue amortization concurrently with a ban? So that, say, for the example of the firearms dealers in residential neighborhoods, that we would not have any new ones starting? And that the existing ones would have a period of time to find someplace else to conduct their business?
Yes. So if council directs us to prohibit firearm sales as a home occupation moving forward and allow... And then also giving those existing firearm dealers a certain period of time to cease operation, then that would happen concurrently. So any new firearm dealers, they would not be able to conduct business from their homes. And the existing ones would be just given a period of time in order for them to come into compliance, meaning, you know, stopping their operations from their home.
And how large is the spacing requirement in Palo Alto for a ban on firearms dealing adjacent to child uses such as daycare, schools, parks?
In Palo Alto, it is 250 feet, as well as in Morgan Hill.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
Well, I'm gonna start with a naive procedural question, but I realized when I read the staff report, I wasn't clear on it. So you're asking us to study now and then we're gonna... I'm checking whether this is true, whether my understanding is true. We're having the study session. We could opt to put between one and four of these, but we would re-review these during our work plan and then maybe, which we do in January or February after the election. And then we would have to decide what to not do? Is that... This may be a city manager question. I'm not sure. Is that the procedure that I thought I had heard before, but I'm not completely clear on?
If I could address that... This is City Attorney Jennifer Logue. Yes. So depending on what council decides this evening, you'll provide us direction, you'll give us parameters on what you'd like to see in the legislation that we bring back. Depending on what you direct us with, some of it is going to require a little more research than others. And between now and February, when you're going to come back and consider your work plan, we will see how far along we get. In my conversation with Councilmember Shaw Walter earlier today, she brought up the idea of possibly of us submitting a memo to you prior to February, letting you know how far we've gotten and what work would be left to do in order to bring the legislation forward. So you go into your work plan in February with an understanding of what it's going to take for us to pull all the legislation together. And that way, you'll have a clear picture on whether or not things would have to be moved around or something would have to be taken off of the work plan. Because, you know, as you know, our office provides support pretty much on everything on the work plan. And so we need to balance our workload with what else is on the work plan and any other deadlines that come with the items on your work plan. So we try to give you a good picture prior to February so you'd know how to make a decision when you decide the work plan. Does that help?
Yes, that's... Thank you. That's exactly what I wanted to know. That's much more clarity on the procedure than I had before. And my second question... So basically, we're telling you what to study briefly and then you bring it back when you know the full... When you have a better idea on what the impacts on various departments would be of each of these four, whichever we select by the end of the night. Okay. The other thing I was going to ask was your... But maybe I don't have to. Was your initial kind of a rundown of each one of the four, which departments you thought would be impacted? So, you know, whether it's community development, you know, land use, whether... I mean, I think all of them are the City Attorney's Office. So you couldn't give me that rundown? Or you could say you'd rather just save that for the memo that you were just talking about?
I think we can say with certainty that the police department will be affected because they will carry the burden of processing the licenses. We've talked to Chief Young about this at length, and so he's aware. We are not clear at this time what, if any, other departments would be affected and whether or not the effect would be long-term on them. There might be some short-term impacts, but long-term, it's the police department.
So that's implementation. But in drawing it up, it's mostly the City Attorney's Office and to some degree, community development for some of them?
I think mostly the City Attorney's Office. Diana, correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think that there would be much involvement with other departments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember... Let's go to Councilmember Madat Shak, because I don't think you've spoken yet, unless I've been mistaken.
Thanks. Just a clarifying question. In the staff report, it talks about Option 1 and Option 2. And I was wondering if there are synergies between the items listed there? Because then, in the presentation we just saw, it had things broken out. So are we... Does it make sense to give direction on each of the individual items broken out? Or is it Option 1 and Option 2?
That's a good question. Thank you, Councilmember Madat Shak. So for Option 2, and specifically, we have the licensing framework, which is one option. And for the prohibition on home occupations and the locational restrictions, from a compliance standpoint, it makes the most sense to have those restrictions as part of a licensing framework. So that when the police department receives an application, they can check mark and say, okay, this person's not conducting business from their homes and they're within this certain distance away from schools, parks, and daycares. So those two elements within Option 2 really work best as a package, I guess is the best way to put it.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the vice mayor's comments caused a... You know, have a question again. If the county were to have a sudden burst of activity and come forward with very similar measures, then we would have the chance to cut back on our approach or work with them in some way before the goal setting would come up or be concluded. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any remaining questions? Not, then we'll go to the public. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press *9 on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. This is for the gun safety legislation study session. We'll go ahead and allocate two minutes. The first speaker is Rachel.
Yes. Hi. Hi, City Council members. Thank you so much. I'm a volunteer with Moms Demand Action and a citizen here, a resident of Mountain View. And I am just coming to applaud City Council for taking... Holding the study session and taking this very necessary first step in keeping everyone safe and furthering gun safety among our community. Thank you so much for your time and for all that you do on gun safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Tom Catman.
Hi, this is Tom Catman. I'm a resident of Mountain View. And I'm opposing additional gun regulations in Mountain View. Option 1 is the main one. And right now, there's a court case going on. It's CRPA versus City of Glendale. The case is about sensitive places, which is the same as what we're talking about here. So don't pursue this Option 1. As the Glendale case will set the precedent for what... As the Glendale case will set the precedent for what you can call a sensitive place. And when sensitive places are defined, the city has the burden to prove that the area included are sensitive places. The court case of Bruin says the government must justify its regulation by demonstrating that is consistent with the nation's historical tradition of firearm regulations. And I'd recommend for the legal department to contact the California Rifle and Pistol Association for their input. They're the ones that are suing the City of Glendale. Great, also, the Mountain View Police Department's great. Thank you very much for your service. Okay, thank you.
You're muted, Mayor.
I'm sorry, sometimes the button works and sometimes it doesn't. Thank you very much. So seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we will return to the council for, for comments and potentially straw motions for each of the items that were presented in the, in the presentation. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I very much appreciate my colleagues agreeing to hear this item. I, I think it's very, very important that, if not a leadership position, that we are strongly pursuing this issue. And my own view is that I would like to see us take an initial pass at both options one and options two. And I understand that some of them may not work out due to the, the changing landscape in terms of legislation and in terms of court cases. But I would like to see us pursue a full-boat approach to having the most protective ordinances that we possibly can in Mountain View. And I think that Palo Alto has set a very good example for having a comprehensive approach in, in terms of what we're looking at here. So I, I think that we should pursue as many options as possible, and at least have the research done on them, so that we're able to see the lay of the land and, at the time of our goal setting, and do, do the best that we can to be protective for our community.
Councilmember Lieber, just for, for my benefit, the, the questions in the staff report were slightly different from the questions in the, the presentation provided a few minutes ago. And so, did you support? The, the questions I, I wrote down were a little bit more granular. So expanding locations, I think that's for the prohibition of carrying firearms, license requirements restricting home occupations, restricting distance from schools, parks, and other sensitive areas. And then there was a preliminary direction on how far, what that distance should be, and then direction on what to do about existing businesses. Did you want to speak to each of those, or wait for another round?
Uh, I support all of those strategies. I would like to potentially look at two fifty or five hundred feet in terms of the storefront businesses. And I, I would like to see us pursue a conditional use permit for the storefront businesses, so that people in our community have the, have knowledge about businesses that are coming in. And, and I would like to limit the conditional use permits to the number of, of stores that we have right now. And I absolutely want to see the, the home businesses out of our neighborhoods. And I think that a, a short period of time to recognize that they would need to find a, a place of business that's not in a home on a residential street is, is reasonable. But I, I support all of these strategies, and I support them all in their strongest versions. Because frankly, the, this has been something that a lot of councils have been talking to over a long, long period of time. And I, I can't really say, without getting overly emotional, that I'm, I'm fed up with the inaction. And I think that we need to do everything in our power to be protective for our community members.
Thank you.
Mayor, would it be helpful for me to share the screen with the questions for the?
Yes, I'll just need to make sure I can go back and forth to make sure I'm capturing everyone's hand. So yes, let's, let's go ahead and put that up for now.
Sure.
Thank you. Councilmember Abbechukah.
Thank you, Mayor. So I one hundred percent agree with Councilmember Lieber. This has been an issue that's been a priority for me for many years. That's why I brought up gun safety legislation or local ordinances. Several years ago, at that time, the council, during goal session, that staff resources-wise, we could only do one a year. So we went with that, and I think we've done two since then. But each time there is a tragedy, it brings back this issue. And I, I'm at a point where I just think that we, I also think that we should just do whatever we can in our power locally to, to provide the strictest or the, the most protection regarding gun safety. And so I, I would support frankly, doing all of these. You know, I can't help but bring up, like, for me personally, the tragedy at the VTA site last year. It's still, and it's, it's, has completely devastated the agency and employees. And seeing that, and it being so close to home, makes this so important for me to, that we, we do what we can. So one, I do support expanding locations where firearms are prohibited. I believe we're talking about sensitive locations, which is number four. So all of tho, all of those areas and whatever was included in the staff report, I would support. I don't know, I can't, I was trying to remember. I think we had some kind of distance of, but with cannabis shops and how close they could be to like a school, and I'm hoping staff could remind me what that was. But to be frank, I think, you know, even a mile away from a school is, is too close. We have some, we have some stores that are, I looked up on our map, like point three miles from a daycare and point, like half a mile from a school. You just go, you know, straight up the street, and you're at an elementary school. And to me, that's too close. So I don't know what the furthest distance is that we could do, but that would be my preference. But if there is a, like a reference with the cannabis shops, I, I would, you know, look at that. Number two, license requirements. I believe Santa, the City of San Jose has done that. Oh, I, I think that's with insurance. So yes, for two, and including, requiring the, the insurance piece. Three, absolutely prohibiting home occupations. And I would say, you know, I would support an amortization period, but that would include, you know, ban on any new, new businesses, and then figuring out some kind of timeframe to phase out the existing businesses and, and either for help, giving them time to find a location, or I guess it was something about recouping loss. So I would support that. So that was number five, and I think that answers them all. Thank you.
Yeah. Let's go to the city attorney first.
I just wanted to provide a little clarification. The insurance requirements that we're talking about with regard to the license is for gun retailers, not for gun owners, which is what's going on and which is what San Jose just did. So I just wanted to distinguish between the two, that's all.
Thank you for the clarification. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I'm going to agree with the previous speakers that I would like to explore the four different options named in the staff report and, and here on the, on the screen, and have them brought back to us, you know, in a memo and for the review during the work plan. In terms of, and yes, hope that the county goes ahead of us on some of them, so that we can be uniform across the county. In terms of things like how many, what the number of feet away from schools, park, daycare, et cetera, I, I would just like to hear in that memo what other, I'm not going to take a stab at it now, what best practices are in our surrounding cities, so that we can benchmark from those, or who knows, maybe we want to do them one better. And yes, I'd like also in the memo, I'd like the memo to include kind of best practices of the cities listed, so we can make those decisions then. And I'll just say, my reasoning is I, I think the vast majority of people in Mountain View do want this to happen, so I, I would like to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shaw Walter.
Well, I think the thing that we're all getting at with, with gun regulations is to make our community safer. That's really what we're, and make our society safer. That, that's really what we're after. And I, I had a great discussion with both the city attorney and the chief of police this morning about this, because it's, you know, it's something that, that is very important to me, too. I, I grew up in a, in a part of the country where guns were very prevalent. And it does change how things work. And one of the things that I really loved about living here has been the absence of guns. It just, it, it just makes life a lot less stressful. And that's, you know, that's, that's a good thing. Anyway, Chief Chung shared with me this report that was done for the county called "The Cost of Gun Violence in Santa Clara County." It came out in August. And I believe that there is a hot link to it in our questions and answers tonight. Anyway, I would, I would suggest that all of you take a look at it. Because what they're talking about as making our society safer, these things are, are, are part of the equation, yes. But even more so are the equity, is the equity work that we are doing. And so I, I want to bring that, I want to bring that up, because we should, we should be interested in what the experts have to say about what is effective. So that equity work that we are doing, you know, using an equity lens in our budgeting and taking equity into consideration and zoning changes, those are also important components of making our community safer. And I think that it's important that we make that part of this discussion. Because really, that's the bottom line here, is making the community more peaceful and safer, right? I mean, I, I think that's, that's what we're after. So based on that, so I just want to share this with everybody. And it does have some interesting data about how many guns that there are in Santa Clara County. It's, it's sort of a shocking number. But the other thing I think that's quite interesting is that whereas something like eight, eighteen percent of the county has, people own guns, the people who own guns often own four or five of them. They're not, you know, they're not, it's not one gun per one person kind of thing. And I thought that was really interesting. Anyway, back to the questions before us. I, I am interested in the, in pursuing all of these questions, but really with the strong caveat that it would be so much more effective to do this as part of a county effort, that I think we should be asking our, you know, our city attorney to, to really take an active role in, in trying to make that happen, because it would be so much better. I mean, you think about how easy it is to go from community to community here. You know, it's just, it's just a few steps for many of us. So I think that having these, having these rules be consistent over a bigger area is just much more protective. The only one I, I think I would diverge from of what has been said to date is the one in number five. And I, I think that personally, I would really be interested more in a grandfather of existing firearm stealers. We do not have a history of problems with these home businesses. And so I, you know, I feel that having them grandfathered in is reasonable, especially when they would be getting licenses on a regular basis. And I also seem to remember from my days and on the planning commission that the legal bar for amortization versus grandfathering was very different. And that might be a very significant work, work issue. So that's something that I hope the, the county, the city attorney will weigh in for us. And I think that answers the questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kamal.
Great, thank you. I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward and the continued conversation as this topic evolves on a, on a policy level. And I'm, and I'm supportive of the direction that my colleagues have, have shared. So I don't really have too much additional. So for one through four, yes, I'd, I'd be interested in, in learning more and, and hearing from staff. I think for number five, it would, I, I would be interested to hear both, the amortization as well as the grandfathering. I think I'm not well-versed in the topic, and so I would, I would like to see the, the options. I see the city attorney raised her hand. Mayor, sorry.
I can wait. I'm just raising my hand to let you know I will answer the amortization versus grandfather question when everyone's done.
Okay, okay, thank you, okay. So, you know, five, I guess I'll, I'll leave for the city attorney to answer that question for us. But one through four, yes, I'm supportive of looking at those options. One thing that I, that I've increasingly heard, and I, I would love for the, the council to consider is like the education component. So, you know, I do think that the, the different legis, safety measures are important, but I also think that it will be a part for the, for us to do an educational component on, on that. And, or if there's firearm safety that the police department or the school districts are sharing with the community, if that can be shared with council, I think that there's some, some good information sharing that can happen there. And I know we have a very active Moms Demand Action chapter in our area. So I don't know if we can add that as just something to, to bring back as an informational. I, I wouldn't want to add anything additional. I just wanted to, to state that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then city attorney, did you want to chime in?
I can now, or I can wait for Councilmember Matta Check. What do you prefer?
Hi, Councilmember Matta Check. Well, let's go to you, and then we'll have city attorney Logue afterward.
Thanks. I wasn't sure if that, what do you prefer was for me or for you? But anyway, so there were some comments made that I definitely agree with, and let me point those out. I think it would be better if the laws were done at the state level, and if it can't be done at the state level, then at the county level. I think it's good to have consistency. So I agree with my colleagues who said that. I'm not sure that's all going to happen, however. So I am interested in doing something at the local level. I appreciate the comparison of what other cities have either done or not done. That's always helpful, because when we're striving to have a bit of consistency, that's good to know. So for me, I would, given staff constraints, I would prioritize looking at option two first, and then I'll go into the details on that. I was actually going to break it out even further than just option two in general, but it sounds like there's more synergies than I thought there were. And but I would prioritize the stuff in option two over the stuff in option one. Assuming that you're not going to work on both of these at the same time. So then with option two, I agree with the comment about I don't think we should have any new businesses, whether they be storefront or at home. And I I don't know that I have enough information to make to provide direction on, do I think amortization or grandfather is the way to go? I would need more information on the three at-home businesses that we have. Things like how long have they been in existence? Do we have any information on their sales? Where are they really located? So I, I'm sorry, I can't really give you direction on that. I need more information. But if we don't allow any new businesses, I think the question of the distance from sensitive areas perhaps is a moot point, because we're not allowing any new ones. Although I guess that could be interpreted, if a school is built close to an existing business, what do we do? I don't know if I have the answer to that one either. So I would need more information on that. What might be logical alternatives and the pros and cons of them? And let's see. On option one, yes, I'm interested in expanding the locations. But again, for me, I'm more focused on the elements of option two before we get to option one. And we can always talk about this in February, because I'm assuming this will all happen and get done before we have our discussion about the work plan. And let's see. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, now go ahead, city attorney.
So let me provide a little information about amortization and grandfathering in, and also tie it to the distance. So we did have a GIS map drawn for us. And we know that if you go out as far as 500 feet, you will affect one of the existing brick and mortar businesses. And so it's going, it becomes very important to determine whether or not you want to amortize or grandfather in. If you stay at 250 feet, I think we are probably safe with regard to the existing businesses. I will, in a moment, ask Diana for clarification on whether or not that also applies to the home occupations. But if you, if you, if you go at 250 feet and you're not affecting the, the, the brick and mortar businesses that exist, then new businesses that come in would also have to stay within that 250-foot range. We wouldn't be preventing new brick and mortar businesses coming in, only home occupations. So I just wanted to clarify the two, those two distinctions. And then amortization, we have done some preliminary legal research, and we have not seen amortization less than a year. So, and it's gone from, from just the cases we've looked at, it's anywhere from one to four years. So I, I heard a statement about it being short. But there is a whole analysis that goes into the amortization period with regard to providing them an opportunity to recoup their investment in their business. And that requires a significant analysis to what their investment in, it was into their business and their current location. So that is something we would have to come back to you on to let you know. We would make a recommendation based on our findings on how long that amortization period would, would be. So I wanted to let you know that that would be governed by California law. And there are pretty, you know, real parameters on that that we would have to consider. So it, it probably wouldn't be less than a year. And, and likely more than that for some of the businesses. So I wanted to give some perspective on that. If you grandfather, you grandfather in the existing and all of the, any new ones that tried to come in, there would be no new home occupations. And any new brick and mortars that tried to come into place would have to be at the distance that you adopt. So if you adopt 250 or 500 feet, they would have to be with, you know, that distance away from any schools, parks, or daycares. So I don't know if that helps. We do have some GIS maps we could share on the screen to kind of give you a perspective of what it looks like. 250 feet around the existing brick and mortar businesses, 500 feet around them. I, I don't know if you're interested in that, but we have it if you wanted to see it.
Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for the city attorney. If amortization implies finding out the value of improvements such as hardening of a building, et cetera, et cetera, for this very specialized use, is it possible to do grandfathering for a defined period of time? And, and then require a conditional use permit and limit the number of conditional use permits?
So I think really what you're describing is amortization. So I'm not aware of grandfathering for a limited period of time. Based on the research we've done thus far, grandfathering in would allow, so it would allow that current use to remain the current use. Now, if, if the business was, was potentially sold, or, you know, someone else tried to come in, it may not apply to them. It would, it could potentially apply to, I mean, we'd have to do a lot of research on that. But it basically, it's a zoning allowance. And so I think it would just apply to that particular use for that building and would always exist if you grandfather it. Would always exist. So that particular building could always be used as gun retail, if you grandfather. And I don't know that there's any such thing as a limited grandfather. I think that's really what you're talking about is amortization. And you would just, you could make it for a longer period of time, you know, four years. But then after the amortization, we'd be asking, we would, that use would no longer be permitted in that location. So no more gun retails, sales could be out of that location. So there's no, it would be totally prohibited in that location moving forward.
Okay. And so if we pursued a 500-foot radius, then it, we would have one bricks and mortar business that we would have to figure out what improvements they had put into the structure.
Yes, that one, if you amortize, we will have to do the work to figure out what would be a reasonable amortization period for that, that one business, yes.
And so we can both ban home dealing and require a conditional use permit for bricks and mortar businesses. And limit those to outside of a 500-foot radius and limit the number of conditional use permits that would be available.
We hadn't looked into limiting the number of the conditional use permits that would be available, but we can do that. We can look into whether or not we can limit the number of permits that could be issued. We had not considered that, that particular, that particular factor, but we could, we could look at that to see if we could limit, say, for instance, no more than three or something like that within the city. We didn't consider it, but we can.
Okay, great, because I, I think that would be a really useful piece of information to get back and make our decisions.
And I'd like to clarify, conditional use permits are typically granted by the CDD department. And so I just want to clarify, do we mean a conditional use permit under planning or the Mountain View Police Department's license that we've presented as an option tonight? Do we want to limit those, the police permits or conditional use permit as provided under CDD, by CDD?
Through, through the mayor, if I, if I may add on a little bit. I, I don't really care whether it's a, a police permit to operate or a conditional use permit. I, I'd like to go with whichever path is, is easier. And, but my main thrust is I want to limit the number of, of bricks and mortar businesses. And I want to eliminate the, the home occupations.
I'm going to, thank you. I'm going to ask a couple of quick questions, then we'll, sorry, go back to the, for another round of comments. Regarding difference between grandfathering and amortization, it, it, it does seem like there is another option, and that would be something akin to a legal non-conforming use, which my understanding means an existing use that was legally permitted can continue. But when that use ceases operation after some period of time, it, it no longer is permitted, which is definitionally different from what you were describing. So is that, is that another option, or are you?
That's what we're calling grandfathering.
Yes.
That's correct. That's exactly what we're calling grandfathering. So as long as the business, it would become a legal non-conforming use, as long as it was continued to operate as a gun retail. If it ever switched and became a clothing store, right? And no longer was used as a retail business, a gun sales business, it could not go convert back to it. So as, as long as it continued, you know, as a retail operation, it, it could, it could remain as that legal, legal non-conforming use. That's what we're calling grandfathering.
Okay, thank you. I, I had misunderstood. I, I had thought you had said that it runs with the building, which in my mind meant even if a given business ceased operation, that a subsequent business could, can continue that use.
No, sorry.
That's not, okay, no worries. Thanks for the clarification. And then another question, I guess, about process. My understanding is staffs will return with some analysis, but this basically is all going through the goal-setting process next year. And, and I'm curious to know how much granular detail you need from us right now when this is all going to be discussed again as part of the goal-setting process? Do you, do you need a lot of granular detail right now? Or would it be actually more appropriate, rather than have you do a bunch of work? And then only to find that it's not a priority next year, drop it, you know? When would you like the granularity and detail?
I think knowing how you want to handle existing businesses that we're going to, that are going to be affected and the, the distance that you would want to impose is important to know. Because that really is going to help us figure out how long it's going to take us to bring this legislation back. So we would, what we'd be doing is letting you know before February, this is a big task. Or the law is, you know, post-ruin is really going askew. And, you know, this is going to take much more time than we thought, and we would let you know that before February. But having those, at least those two guideposts on what you want to do with existing businesses that are affected and the distance is going to be really helpful, because those are two things we, we need to figure out before we can answer the question of how long it's going to take us to bring this all back.
Okay, that's good to know, and it's different from what I was expecting. Thank you. Councilmember Abi Koga.
Thank you, Mayor. Question regarding limiting the number of businesses. Do we, are we required to allow any businesses at all?
Yeah, I, we, we talked about, when we were talking about how far the distance you could require, there is definitely a point in which you make the distance too far, that you, you effectively boot them out of the city. And we talked about that's going to have to take some significant legal research. I don't know that you could effectively prohibit gun retail sales as a whole. I do not have that answer tonight. So that would be a whole different, you know, legal analysis we would have to perform.
I guess I was just thinking, you know, because we did decide on cannabis shops, whether to have them or not, and how many, what would the difference be with, with firearms?
If I may, because the, have possessing or having a firearm is considered a constitutional right. There is more of, you know, a stronger argument that we would need to, we couldn't prohibit gun stores altogether. There's actually a case out of Alameda County, Tushera versus County of Alameda, in which the court explored this, this question and stated, you know, if there was a restriction on, you know, US citizens being able to acquire firearms, that could be considered a restraint, restraining their Second Amendment right under the Constitution. So, but like the city attorney said, we would need to do some additional legal research on that matter. But because it is a constitutional right, it is different than the cannabis business matter.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hicks.
So I'm going to give my answer to the distance and amortization, but it's kind of a non-answer. I would, I would like it to be consistent with our surrounding cities, which I realize may not be consistent with each other. But for, you know, other people have talked about reasons for consistency, but I also would think that would make it like less legally complex. So that's what I would be most interested in, in hearing come back to us. And then we could go with it or not go with it. If we think we want to, you know, do one better, that would be, that would be something we could choose when this next comes on our agenda. So that's.
Thank you. Councilmember Showalter.
Yeah, I basically concur with what Vice Mayor Hicks just said. And I also had a question for the chief. Do we have any data that shows that changing these numbers between like 250 feet and 500 feet really increases safety? I mean, that's, I, I really keep coming back to that. I want to make my community safe. And is this something that will make us safer? Or do we know?
Good evening. Chris Chong, Police Chief. So the data, I don't have that data. There's no, of the statistics that we have, there's no causal relationship between a gun store and nearby gun crime. So I can't really delineate between 250 or 500.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any remaining questions or comments? So unfortunately, the, the two questions that staff said would be most helpful to them are the two most muddied. So we're going to go through and take a straw poll on each one of these items. And if there are other things you would like to provide to staff that we can consider additional straw polls as well. But the first is, this one had strong major, majority support, but well, just for the formality of it. The first one is the expanding locations where firearms are prohibited. Do we want to provide staff that direction to explore? Let's raise hands. One, two, three, four, five, six. So yeah, so strong majority support for that. Thank you. The next one is license requirements for firearm dealers. Work by that direction to staff, one, two, three, four, five. So yes, strong majority support. And then restricting home occupation is the next question. So seven, that's also unanimous. And then restricting distance from schools, parks, and daycares is the next question. Two, three, four, five. That's also unanimous. I'm going to start with 500, and then we'll go to 250 if there isn't support for 500. So now the next one is the distance. Do, do members of the council support 500 feet? Uh, do do members of the council support five hundred feet? Uh, Councilmember Madasak, did you want to clarify?
Yes, so sorry, this is where I feel like it would be helpful to have the maps, um, but we really want to get into that level of detail at this study session.
So I I had thought that this level of detail would not be helpful for staff, but city attorney Logue had said that they actually would. Benefit from having this level of detail.
Yeah, but I I feel like um I need more information. So I I would need to see the maps if we're gonna go to this level of detail.
How about if we come back with legislation at two hundred and fifty feet? With the caveat that you can amend on the floor to increase the distance and we can and we can come back with. Maps so you can see exactly what it looks like. Um, you know, we can start at two hundred and fifty feet. And, you know, knowing that 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 would be an allowable amendment on the floor. So, you know, motion to adopt with the amendment of. A distance is something that you could do um without violating any Brown Act noticing requirement. So we could start at two hundred and fifty. If that would help with the knowledge that that may be increased.
Being a majority of the council shake their heads, uh, but Councilmember Lieber, did you want to seek a clarification?
Well, I just wanted to say that given that there were four votes for five hundred feet, I think we should. Have the option of five hundred or two fifty uh co-equal. I I don't think that we should only be presented with five or with two fifty.
Uh, my my, I I had interpreted the city attorney's suggestion to include also allowing exploration to five hundred feet as well. So it was it was sort of. Both and, but let's just do a quick show of hand.
I think my understanding of what she said was you'll be presented with two fifty and then if you want five hundred, you could amend it. But I'd like to have, you know, given that there was majority support for five hundred. I I'd like to be fair and have both those options be co-equal in coming back.
Is there support for that suggestion to the hybrid uh between the city attorney's recommendation to come back with? Two fifty and then also have a five hundred foot option. One, two, three, four, five. So looks like there's majority of support for that. So both options will be presented to the council. Um, when uh when staff returns. And then the last question is gonna be the most challenging, I think. Um, I heard uh three. Councilmembers supporting amortization and then I think three. Uh, one supporting grandfathering and then two interested in exploring both options. I don't think we're gonna get a majority for any of them, but we can try. Um, is there a majority support for staff to return with? Both options essentially and. Analysis for for both an amortization option and also grandfathering option.
Um, Mayor, if I may, it may be helpful to als- I don't know, it may be helpful to break it up into whether. Home occupations should be amorted, amortized or grandfathered and then separately the storefront businesses. So maybe. That might be an easier way to. To get to a majority support. I'm not sure.
We, I'm not sure there was, I don't think that the difference was based.
Okay.
I think it was based on the treatment of of type of um on the the business itself, but we can, we can. Provide that granular detail is helpful. Um. Uh, yeah, we we could maybe, I'm doing myself a disservice in doing this, but maybe we just asked all of the questions. Is there support to direct staff? To explore only amortization. There might be four votes for that. One, two, three. There is not support for that. And then is there support to only return with a grandfathering option? There is not support for that. So that means both options will have to come back. And I'm presuming that that will be for both home occupations and also brick and mortar. There is that the consensus of the council, one, two, three, four, five. Is that the unanimous support? City Attorney?
So I need to clarify. The reason why that is a problem is because you are literally asking us to draft. Two totally different ordinances. If you are amortizing, we are drafting an ordinance that provides. Amortization provisions and sunsets and and requirements and things like that. It goes in the ordinance. If we are grandfathering, it's a much shorter ordinance that that grandfathers in. So are you. Literally asking us to bring back, it's almost as if we're gonna be bringing back. Four different ordinances because one is gonna have two hundred and fifty feet in it, one's gonna have five hundred feet in it. Both of those, we have to bring back versions that have amortization and grandfathering. Do you see what I'm saying? They're literally different pieces of legislation. They're written differently. And so I don't know how short of you making. That's why I suggested coming back with an ordinance that's at two fifty in it and all you'd be doing was amending the distance. But if you're asking us to write different ordinances for you to look at, it becomes just exponentially more complicated. Um, we could come back with another study session and provide a lot more information if that's what you want, but. I think in order to draft. We need to know what you want to do unless you want us to really literally bring back several. Pieces of legislation for you to look at. And that's just a lot of work to write different ordinances. Sorry, but I wanted to clarify what that means, what your vote means for us.
You know, tha- thank you for clarifying. It's it's in part why I was surprised that you were seeking the granularity of detail right now. Uh, when we we haven't really had, you know, a great deal of analysis about the impact of each of these. Uh, Councilmember Kamay.
Great, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna make a suggestion, Mayor, kind of given all of the discussion and the feedback recently from the city attorney. Which is, I I I do think that perhaps this needs to come back to us uh as as a study session. I think that we are, my, we are a a council that likes options. And we and we like to to weigh those options. And so I think uh whether it's the two fifty or the five hundred feet. Whether it's to amortize or to grandfather, I think those are big decisions that the council needs to make. And if staff is saying that. Um. They would need to create four different, you know, ordinances, then perhaps that means that we need, this needs to come back. And so. My um, my request to staff would be perhaps we could include this. The questions that will be in the study session in the staff report, because I think this is a completely, for me, and you know. I feel like we're having a little bit of a different conversation that I had been expecting, given the staff report. And so I think that's why council i- is discussing this so much. So. I don't know if I need to make a motion for that. I know it's a study session, but my suggestion would be that we need to. Bring back those two items in particular where we have all had a lot of discussion, uh, bring them back. That, so can we get clarification on on if that needs to be a straw poll or straw motion or if I can make that? I think that'd be helpful.
Uh, I'm certainly happy to to consider a straw poll. Um, let's let's take a few more comments because if if everyone's on board with the. Study session, then that's great. We won't need to to focus too much, but if there's a, if there is an opportunity to. To provide that, if there are four votes for a particular direction, then that skips a step that I think staff was was hoping to skip. Um, Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes, I'm I'm gonna come back with the same, I have the same question now that I had at the beginning of of this study session. I I didn't think we were directing to come back with full-blown ordinances. I thought they were coming back with a memo. And and I don't, I don't feel that at this point I have enough information. You know, so for example, for distances, I don't know, are all, do all the other cities cited? All use one particular distance? I don't have that information. Or have cities that have gone for five hundred feet had legal challenges? I really don't have any basis for making these decisions. And I I think what I'm asking for is just the memo. That uh that was spoken about earlier, not a fully blown, fully blown ordinance or. With all these options that we're not deciding now for different ordinances, fully, but that would flesh out a little more. You know, you showed us the other cities that have some sort of uh these, that have these gun regulations. Flesh out a little more, what are their distances? Do they grandfather or amortize and how do they do that? Um, I thought that's what the memo was gonna have and that we were gonna use that for our work plan in February. So. If if that's not the case, I guess I misunderstood the process and I would like some clarification on what the process is.
Councilmember Showalter?
I couldn't have said it better myself. Um, I thought what we were trying to give direction for was a memo. And that the information in the memo would help direct us during the goal setting and the work plan development. So that that's what I I think we we should be talking about here. I think it's premature to give the um. You know, the specific direction about what should be in the um, the ordinances if if they are to follow because. Uh, we just don't know enough about it yet. And and I also do think that a- another thing I want. To be included in our direction is the desire to work with um. Uh, other communities in the in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, city manager, did you wanna?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I see the city attorney has her hand raised, so I'll. I'll defer to her if she wants to clarify something and then I'll follow up based on what she says.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Um, so um, I did want to provide some clarification. The memo that I talked about bringing back was on timing. It was on timing on how quickly we could get the legislation back to you. The timing all hinged on whether or not you were going two hundred and fifty feet, five hundred feet or something further than that. And whether or not you wanted to amortize or grandfather in. And so if you had decided tonight to say amortize. We would start our our legal research on what it, what amortization would be required for each and every one of these businesses. Especially if you elected five hundred or a thousand feet, for instance, which is gonna affect the brick and brick and mortars. So the memo would be if we had gotten the granular, you know, direction today, the memo was going to advise you. On what we had figured out with regard to, you know, your distances and your amortization and what needed to be done and when we believed we could. We could get the legislation back. So, but what I'm hearing is you need us to. Hone in on providing more information with regard to distances, more information about amortization. And you want specific details with regard to what the surrounding cities do. Um, to find out if we are consistent or inconsistent. We can definitely do that. I think it would probably be helpful to have it in another study session because we are going to eventually need. Direction from the council on which of the options you choose. But we can now focus on what what is clear here, where the where the confusion is and where you need a lot more information. I'm first to clear on. Distance, amortization, grandfathering and surrounding jurisdictions.
Thank you. City manager?
Um, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, City Attorney. So that's what I was going to recommend to the council that. Uh, we're talking about a memo, but what I'm hearing sounds more like a study session. Um, that we can iron out some of these um various options for council and then you all can give direction on on how. You wish to move forward. Um, that way it's very clear for both council and staff. On what the city attorney is actually going to be bringing back to you. And then they can also have more time to do all this research. Um, that will be helpful in your decision-making. So I I recommend that as well. I think that will be cleaner for you all.
Thank you. Uh, this sits back to Councilmember Kamay's suggestion. I I think um, one thing that would. Help me is understanding, there's a lot of work that goes just in preparing the analysis for the council. Um, is staff proposing to have the council? Determine whether we want to do this study session as part of our goal-setting process, weighing against other work plan items? Or is staff proposing that we have this study session outside of the goal-setting process?
I would recommend that it be part of the goal-setting process. We, it's.
Okay.
We will start looking into it now, but I think that it should be fully discussed during the goal-setting process. I think that would make most sense.
Okay, but I think it's important for us for us to be all on the same page about that. Because what that would mean then is that the study session is no guarantee. That we would have to affirmatively prioritize that among all of the other items that are gonna go before us for consideration as part of the goal-setting. Process. So. That is the, my understanding of the staff recommended process. Um. Their comfort and support for that proposal. Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so uh, under that scenario. In February, we would decide if we want to have a study session. And then uh, the study session would be prepared. And then we would have the study session and then out of the study session. Uh, something that would be the product in terms of ordinances would come out of that. But that wouldn't be until next spring.
Right.
Yeah, so I I think I'd be more comfortable with a a memo of some kind. Um, sooner so that we can show the community that we are actually serious about doing something. Um, I think it's been been a lot of years, as Councilmember Abi Koga pointed out. Um, you know, I I sent a letter to all the city councils on the peninsula. Uh, back uh about five years ago and and Mountain View was the only one that responded. And picked out a couple of things to do from it. And. We, Councilmember Abi Koga and I both participated in the county process about the cost of um firearm. Firearms in the community. And so I think that we're just um. Moving at a really glacial pace that does not represent where our surrounding communities are. Um, Sunnyvale, uh, placed a measure on the ballot and it was approved by. Uh, just over seventy percent of the voters to move forward on some very ambitious. Um. Measures and and they're doing more now. Um, Palo Alto, we know has had measures for more than ten years. Um, and I I just think at some point we need to say to the community. We either value this or we don't. And um, I I think that uh. You know, ample time has been out there to to get this thing started and to get it rolling down the hill. And um, I I think that waiting to see if it's prioritized in goal-setting before we have a study session. Uh, is is just really thin soup. It's it's way too weak. And and we need to do more of that and and I understand the the voices that are out there in the community that say. Will this really make a difference for us? Um, because we haven't had a problem before. And frankly, VTA didn't have a problem before. Newtown didn't have a problem before. The Uvalde, Texas didn't have a problem before. And it. At some point, I think we have to do do more than we're doing. And and this timeline that's being mentioned is is just simply too long.
Thank you. So I I think there are three options essentially. One is we can provide. The direction that staff is seeking based on the presentation. And if there's majority support for. The various options here, that really expedite the process. We don't want to do that, then we have to have a study session. And either that could be done in the context of goal-setting along consideration with everything else. Or it could be done outside of goal-setting, which means there's a different impact. Something is gonna have to be deprioritized. We don't know what that will be yet. Um, but that's the only way to make possible the. The stud- to to expedite the the study session to give us more time to provide this input. So our options are provide the. So our options are provide the input now, have a study session sooner, and then staff will have to share with us what gets postponed or do it as part of goal-setting. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Does the city attorney wanna say something first?
Sorry about that.
I just wanted to, I just wanted to say that it's it's fine if you prefer to have a study session outside of goal-setting. I just didn't wanna make it too aggressive. It's not something that, given the amount of work that we're gonna need to do, we're gonna need to do a lot of upfront research on amortization. That's significant research. We're 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 literally doing two paths now. And so I'm fine with having a guaranteed study session outside of goal-setting. I just don't know if we can get back to you in advance of goal-setting for you to to goal-set the legislation itself. That's the concern that I had. But I I'm fine with with a guaranteed study session.
Thank you. And councilmember Abi Koga, you're still at the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so, um, my original assumption with this when we first discussed it was that today we would have a discussion on where this goes in terms of our priorities and being able to weigh what else we would have to look at removing on our current work plan to make this happen. So if we're doing the study session and then kicking it to February, I don't really see any difference, honestly. And, um, yeah, I I would say I I that wasn't my intent. My intent was to try to try to expedite this more quickly. And I think, uh, councilmember Lieber and I are in agreement on that. So I I the study, and I I feel that the study session is fine, but it sounds like we have two, maybe two questions to answer. And, um, you know, we've had study sessions with like one or two items and afterwards, like, come out thinking, why did we have that study session? So if there's a way to ex- with a memo to expedite, you know, I would be, I would much prefer to do that. I I I I I know our agendas are already packed. I don't honestly think we can get to this, as the city attorney said, before February. So at least a memo to give us the options would be helpful so that, I guess at that point, if we have to make a decision as to where it falls on our list of priorities, we'll have all the information there. But, you know, frankly speaking, if you ask the question, I think I've already answered it. So I'm ready to make the decision right now. I I think we did have four for five hundred feet. So to me, that one was answered. I think the only remaining question then is the amortization or grandfathering issue. So I just don't really feel like we need a full study session for one item. That's just me.
Thank you. And I'm I'm happy to to repull some of these because if if there is majority support for for some of the parameters that staff is seeking direction on, then we don't need an additional study session or additional work on analysis because staff will have gotten the direction that they need. Do that. I need four votes. So I I think then what I can do, if there are no other, no other questions or comments, I think what I'll probably need to do is seek four votes for which of the three processes the council wants to go down. So, uh, I think the first one is because we've heard interest in a study session that is outside of the goal-setting process in order for it to occur temporally sooner. With the remaining questions that we haven't answered, I'll check to see is there support for doing that? If there is not support for doing that, then I'll ask if we would do this instead during goal-setting. And if there is not support for that, then we can try again and ask the same questions about the distance and the amortization versus grandfathering. And if we can get four votes for one of those, then we would bypass the need for any further study session. Councilmember Shell Walter.
Hi, isn't a memo before the a memo before the goal-setting and study session also an option?
That's, it's, I I think what staff is telling us is if we don't provide direction right now, they have to do additional work. So the the work is the analysis about various impacts for love, different distances, grandfathering versus amortization, the legal justification for amortization over, you know, a period of time. They can certainly do that in a memo form. It's just additional work. So if we don't want them to do the additional work, then we would provide the direction tonight and they won't have to do the additional work and then we could skip a step. Does that clarify?
And just just for clarif- just for clarification, we would be doing an extensive memo for the study session. To have us do a memo before the memo, before the study session, is asking us to write two memos. Our goal now, my goal now, based on what I'm hearing, is to get you a very extensive memo that does all of the necessary research with regard to all of, you know, amortization, grandfathering, where are all the existing businesses, how are you going to affect them if you go two hundred fifty feet, five hundred fifty feet, a thousand feet? And we are also going to have an extensive memo that tells you exactly what every bordering city around us does so that you know whether or not you're consistent. I prefer to do that one memo one time. And then, and that would be, hopefully, precede the study session at which you could make a decision. I just don't, doing two memos, doing a memo, we can't get the answers from you without, you know, having. So I'd like to, I'm clear on what you need and I'd really like to do that extensive work one time and come to you in a study session and get the guidance rather than a second memo. I I just wanted to put that out there.
Thanks for that clarification. I I was, I was a little confused there.
No worries. Thank you, city attorney. Vice Mayor Hicks.
What I was hoping for was just, I would just like to know what the surrounding cities do. If a hundred percent of them did, or if most of them did five hundred feet, or if most of them did, or if all of them did two hundred fifty feet, if all of them grandfathered or, you know, if there's some consistency like that, that's the information I feel I need to make a decision. So I I don't know, I, maybe I'm confusing things more by throwing that into the the mix, but I'm not really looking for, at at this point, for long, you know, a long memo or full-blown ordinances or maybe not even a full study session. I just don't have, I I'm not well-versed in this and don't have, you know, any benchmarks at all at this point.
Okay. Thank you. We we still have the same fundamental problem. We can either provide the direction tonight or we can ask staff to do additional analysis. And then we have to decide if they do additional analysis, do we want them to do it sooner and then push existing work out? Or do we wanna do it in the context of the goal-setting cycle? City manager McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask for a short five-minute break just so I can have a discussion with the city attorney on coming back with the the best path forward for council? I'm hearing your interest certainly in the expediency of this. And I'm also hearing the city attorney's concerns just about workload. So if I could just have a few minutes to talk with her, come back to council, recommend a path forward that you all are comfortable with and that she's comfortable with, I think that would be helpful.
Is the council comfortable with that? Yes. Got five minutes. Some wisely. City Attorney Logue or City Manager McCarthy, did you wanna speak to a potential path forward?
Yes, this, the city manager is going to.
The manager, McCarthy?
Yes. Mayor, thank you. So, um, here is where we landed. So right now, this item is already on your work plan, the current work plan. The gun safety, this is just a continuation of what council decided prior to the summer break. And we're bringing back more options for council to to determine how you want to further the item that's already on your work plan. So the challenge we have is that if we provide council with a memo, you all cannot give direction via a memo. You can only give direction via an agenda item. So if the city attorney was to come back with a memo outlining all of the options and outlining what all the other cities have done, outlining the legislation, outlining the two fifty versus five hundred, outlining the amortization versus grandfathering, you will have decisions to make. So the only way you can make those decisions is via an agenda item. So we suggest that we don't put this on the February work plan in the sense that we will move this forward. City Attorney's Office will do this research. And the the plethora of research, because what what we're hearing from council is that there is interest in hearing about the options, hearing about what other cities are doing, hearing about the two fifty versus five hundred, seeing the maps. All of that stuff will then come to you all in the first quarter of twenty twenty-three. And then you can give direction on moving forward. And then the city attorney will bring back the ordinances that align with the policy direction that council gives. But we cannot get that feedback from you all via a memo. So we need to come to you all with a study session. So that's, that's where we landed. That's our, that is our best recommendation for you all and and how to move forward. And I think hopefully that will get at your desire to move as quickly as possible, but also give the city attorney's office time to do a lot of this research because it is a lot of work that they need to do. So I think hopefully we landed in a good middle ground there and we'll come back in the first quarter.
So good middle ground, but I think the question that we do need to ask ourselves is what work gets pushed out? Because now we have work that was not planned.
That is accurate, Mayor, and I do not know the answer to that quite yet. I'll need to talk to the city attorney and and look at what they are working on and the impacts. And then we'll have to let council know.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm I'm hearing that that's the the most expeditious thing possible to do. And so I would And so I would agree with it on that basis. And if the votes that we've already taken can be conveyed to staff, I know that, you know, staff are right here to hear it. So can hear where the interest lies in terms of the various options, then we wouldn't have wasted our time tonight in terms of that.
Thank you. Any remaining questions or comments? Keep in mind, we don't have to have the study session if there are four votes for the outstanding questions. But if no one would like to change their vote, then let's take a quick straw poll on the staff recommended approach, which is to have a study session in the first quarter of next year and at some later date. We'll find out what items, what work gets pushed out because now this is priority. Councilmember Avikoga.
Mayor, can you just ask the questions that we needed, we were supposed to vote on? And if there's not enough, that's fine, but we've been talking about this for so long, I can't even remember what questions we had to finish answering.
There were two. I'm happy to do that. The first is to pose a distance for restricting home occupation. And I believe the council also is interested in brick and mortar firearms dealers from schools, parks, and daycares. Two options for 250 feet and 500 feet. City Attorney Logue, I see you've unmuted yourself.
If it helps, just as a reminder, Palo Alto and Los Gatos are at 250 feet. That's what we know tonight. We don't know other cities, but those are the two we know tonight.
Okay, I'll start with 500. If there's not support for 500, then we'll try 250. The first distance proposed is 500 feet restriction. Raise hands, one, two, three. And then is there support for 250 feet? One, two, three. Okay, great. Strong support for 250 feet. So that answers one question. Next question is amortization versus grandfathering. So there was closer to majority support for amortization than grandfathering, so we'll try that. So does the council support exploring amortization of existing businesses? One, two, three. Okay, four. Okay, that's the majority. That means we do not need to have a study session because we've answered the questions that staff needed to prepare ordinances. Are there any further questions or comments? Okay, staff, do you have everything that you need?
Yes, we do. Yes, we will head down the path of preparing legislation for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you very much, Diana, and to the Attorney Logue and Yixiong. Congratulations. Councilmember Lieber, last thought.
Mayor, before we leave this item, I just wanted to give kudos to our Chief of Police and the PD staff for really vigorously implementing the state law on the gun violence restraining orders. It's really great to hear that we're on the lead in terms of that and also the efforts that the chief and PD have put into gun buybacks into accepting firearms that people just want to get out of their homes. They've done great work on that and kudos to them for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everyone. We'll conclude this item and move on to 7.1 Public Hearing on Downtown Business Improvement Areas. If someone can help me find Economic Vitality Manager John Lang to promote into the panel. Welcome, John, and feel free to begin the presentation whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council, community of Mountain View, John Lang, Economic Vitality Manager. I only have a brief set of comments for you this evening. Tonight, we are holding the first public hearing in the longstanding annual renewal process for the downtown business improvement areas. The second meeting will take place on November 15, 2022, to approve the renewal. There are two business improvement areas. BIA number one, which includes all businesses along Castro Street and the side streets. BIA number two includes businesses in the 100 to 300 blocks of Castro Street. The BIA assessments generated from both areas are used for very specific programming and services to support the downtown business community. In the annual report that was included in the packet prepared by the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce, estimated the 2023 projected revenues from both of the areas to be approximately $40,675 based upon the businesses that are there today. Tonight, City Council may discuss the BIAs and receive any comments or input from members of the public. There are three recommendations before council tonight. Approve the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce Annual Report for 2022, and then adopt resolutions declaring intention to levy an assessment in BIAs number one and number two for calendar year 2023. This concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Are there any questions from the council? No. Councilmember Showalter.
Yes, I'd just like to raise a question that I raised in our council questions. And that is about the concept of a vacancy tax and whether or not the BIA fees would be a methodology for vacancy tax. And so I wondered if you could explain, tell us about that, Mr. Lang.
Absolutely. So one, just know that the BIA fees are meant to help the full district. And so that's really what the assessment is intended to do is drive interest in the downtown. As it relates to a vacancy tax, typically that's implemented on a particular business or businesses or empty storefronts. And as the council directed staff to look at this through the lens of the economic vitality strategy, we do intend to bring back through that work a program for council consideration related to either a vacancy tax, a vacancy registry. We do know other communities have implemented vacancy tax as well as vacancy registry. And these are programs that are designed to collect funds and ensure buildings that may be vacant are safe. And that is a way to encourage hopefully new investment in buildings or new tenant in buildings. So right now, the BIA funds are not focused on solving empty storefronts. They are meant to market the downtown.
I just wanted to bring that up because I think when we all look at downtown, one of the major issues is, you know, is the vacancies we have on these storefronts. So thank you for sharing that information to us. And we are, I mean, I certainly am, and I would imagine that my fellow council members are, are really interested in what we can do to perk up the downtown and getting rid of vacancies or, you know, covering those windows with attractive posters or displays or something would upgrade the downtown. So that's why I saw there being a nexus between the business impact fee because the, you know, the general appearance of the entire downtown would be approved. And I think those aesthetic things are, you know, they're important. So that's why, you know, I wanted to bring that up.
Thank you. Councilmember Lieber.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a question. I saw the overall amount that the revenue is for the two BIAs. I was wondering how much the average storefront is paying? And it said in the report that the city assists or requires that the renewal of the business licenses take place, the assessments are paid at that time. And are most of the businesses paying the assessments and how much do they pay? And what about the high number of vacant spaces that we have? Are the vacant spaces paying something, the landlords?
Very good question. So recognizing there are two different BIAs and they're structured a little bit differently. So at a high level, BIA number one classifies businesses into four categories. And the range of fees that they pay annually in addition to the business license fee, so this is just the BIA fee, range from $50 to $200 annually. So the lowest is office, they pay $50. And the highest would be a restaurant use, which is $200. That's in BIA number one. And so a vacant space, which does not have a business in it, there would be no BIA fee collected because there's no business. This is an attachment to the business license fee. So vacant spaces are not contributing to this because there is no business there. On BIA number two, it's based upon square footage and there's three ranges of square footage. So the square footage rates at the low end is $25 that a business would pay. At the high end with the most space, it would be up to $175. And that detail is actually broken down in the Mountain View Chamber Report. That is one of the attachments. So it does break down those fees in the categories.
And so for example, through the mayor, if I may ask another question. Say Books Inc. has multiple locations and one of them, thank God, is here on Castro Street. And so then a commercial landlord would also have multiple locations throughout the valley, maybe throughout the state, throughout the country. And so they pay nothing even though they are a business that owns that asset or controls that asset. But they are paying nothing because they're holding it vacant. Is that the situation right now?
So, yeah, so for instance, in that example, Books Inc. would be paying a business license as well as the BIA fee. Now, that property, if there was no tenant in there, they would not be, there is no business license for no business and there is no BIA fee. Now, if the property owner does register as a commercial landlord, there is a business license that's collected fee, but there is no BIA fee collected with that. So as a commercial property owner and renting space, that's your business, you do pay a business license on that, but you don't pay the BIA fee.
And so to change that, it would have to be a vote of those participating businesses within the district that would vote to change the rules of the BIA and include landlords, whether absentee or not.
So there's, we would, in order to make this change and effectuate this change, we would actually have to come back to council at a separate time to do this. We've, as part of adopting the report from the chamber, it's outlining this is the fee that's going to be charged and this is how we noticed it. So if this is something that council would like us to consider, it would be staff's recommendation to have us come back next year in that cycle. So as we prepare for 2024, to present that to you at that point in time so we could actually communicate that to the business community that there would be a change occurring. Once again, this is to basically enact the charge beginning January 2023. So in order to make the change, we would need time to kind of communicate that, that that change is coming. So our recommendation would be to hold off for the next cycle to do that if that's amenable to council.
I think it's very good for council to just know that, as Councilmember Showalter pointed out, you know, those individuals or corporations or partnerships or whatever they are that are holding a large amount of real estate vacant in the downtown are paying nothing towards these business areas. They're skating on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Trivostova, did you want to speak to this?
Yes, we would recommend the council proceed with the recommendation at this point so we can move forward on the assessments and the chamber's program. But as the Economic Development Manager John Lang suggested, and I would even amend that to say there's a plethora of programs the council might be interested in for businesses in the downtown, including the issue of vacancy. I would suggest we address that in the study session for the Economic Vitality Strategy. And then we can develop the funding plan that will give the chamber some room to inform their, you know, the businesses that they represent, including the downtown businesses, and we can create a plan forward as part of the Economic Vitality Strategy.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, thanks.
Well, I think my comment overlaps with what Ms. Trivostova has just said, but I think to some degree, I, you know, I like that we're paying attention to vacancies and think they're important. I think to some degree, we're confusing two different things, a vacancy tax and a contribution to the BIA. They're not necessarily the same thing, and I'm not even sure that a contribution to the BIA as a solution to vacancy is really the best one. I think what RT has mentioned and John has mentioned about talking about it under the rubric of Economic Vitality Strategy is probably the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. We are moving into comments and I haven't taken public comment yet. So let's stick to questions. Are there any remaining questions about this item? I don't think RT has a question. I'm going to resume that's a hand from another time. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. Are there any members of the public interested in speaking? I'm not seeing any, so we will return to the council for deliberation. And I will note that a motion to approve the recommendation should also include reading the title of the resolutions attached to the report. Councilmember Avikoga.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to go ahead and make the motion. I see hands. All right, okay. Thank you. So I will make the motion to adopt approving the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce Annual Report and adopting a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View declaring its intent to levy an annual assessment for calendar year 2023 for the downtown Mountain View Business Improvement Area number one, to be read in title only for the reading waived and set a public hearing date of November 15, 22, 2022. And adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View declaring its intent to levy an assessment for calendar year 2023 for the downtown Mountain View Business Improvement Area number two, to be read in title only for the reading waived and set a public hearing date of November 15, 2022.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Matta Chat.
Second, Ken.
Thank you. Councilmember Showalter.
Well, I would just like to comment, I'm going to be supportive of the motion, but I'm also very supportive of what RT suggested. I do think that this vacancy issue is really a big deal for our community. And that's why I brought it up. I mean, it seems like we're talking about downtown. Maybe this isn't the exact way to deal with it. But I do think that we But I do think that we, um, you know, we, uh, we really need to get on top of this problem. And um, I know that it's been brewing for a long time, but um, it's uh, i- it's gotten decidedly worse in the last couple of years. And um, I'm, I'm, I'm quite sure that there are things that we could do that would make a difference. So uh, uh, understanding from the staff what those things are, you know, that's real, that would be really welcome knowledge. So thank you for suggesting to include that. And um, I, I would just really strongly support that, uh, you know, that creativity and sharing of, of, of the knowledge you have. Thanks.
Thank you. Any remaining questions or comments? If not, then I'll ask the city clerk to start the roll call.
Councilmember Abey Koga?
Hi.
Councilmember Madichak?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamay?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Aye.
Councilmember Shawalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Mayor Ramirez?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now we will proceed to item seven point two, Castro Street Pedestrian Mall, Various Actions. Please note that we will open the public hearing for public comment on this item following the staff's presentation and council questions. Therefore, this is the last opportunity for members of the public to submit written protests and written claims related to the establishment of the pedestrian mall. Written protests and claims must be delivered to City Hall before the public hearing, hearing is opened. Any written uh, protesting or claims submitted after the hearing is opened will not be accepted or considered. Uh, and I believe all of the staff who are participating are being added. Um, one other thing, um, this discussion is fairly narrowly scoped. There may be interest in uh, design standards and guidelines and uh, things of that nature. Um, there is an ad hoc subcommittee uh, that is exploring uh, many of those questions and there will be no final decisions about design standards or guidelines tonight. Uh, let's see, Transportation Planner, uh, Aruna, uh, Badu- Baduna will present the item. If ever you're ready.
Can you see my screen? Okay. Sorry, I was on mute.
Oh, no, we, we can see it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Aruna Baduna, Transportation Planner. Before you tonight, for your consideration and potential approval are actions that will establish the Castro Street Pedestrian Walls between East Leg of West Evelyn Avenue and California Street, permanently closing these blocks to vehicular traffic. The council took the first step in the nineteen sixty pedestrian mall law process by adopting a resolution of intent on June twenty-eighth of this year. At tonight's meeting, we are in the second step, which involves holding a public hearing for the establishment of pedestrian malls and adopting resolutions and introducing, introducing an ordinance. After an ordinance is adopted to establish the pedestrian malls, there will be substantial staff work and council approvals in twenty twenty-three and twenty-four to create an interim pedestrian mall. This interim pedestrian mall would be in place until a permanent pedestrian mall can be funded, designed and constructed in the future. In August of this year, the mayor approved the formation of a council ad hoc committee to review and provide direction on, for the interim pedestrian mall. Staff will continue to work closely with the ad hoc committee over the next few months on the development of key elements for the pedestrian mall, including a functional and program plan, interim design standards and guidelines, and city infrastructure improvements. These elements will be brought back to the council for approval in early twenty twenty-three based on the recommendations of the ad hoc committee. No council decisions related to these elements are required tonight in order to adopt the resolution and introduce the ordinance to establish the pedestrian mall. As specified in the nineteen sixty pedestrian mall law, property owners and tenants abetting the proposed pedestrian malls may protest or submit claims, legal claims up to the time of the public hearing. If property owners representing more than fifty percent of frontage within a proposed pedestrian mall block submit written protests, a pedestrian mall for that block cannot be established. If any written claims for damages are received from property owners or tenants, the city must resolve the claims before establishing the pedestrian malls. The process and requirements for submitting written protests and claims are described in the resolution of intent adopted by the council in June. Copies of the resolution of intent were posted along Castro in June, as required by the pedestrian mall law. In addition, the resolution of intent was made to all the abetting property owners and tenants in July. Staff conducted virtual meetings with property owners and held in-person staff hours on Castro to meet with the businesses at various times during this period to apprise them of the pedestrian mall law process. Based on the experience from the past two years and feedback from the community and businesses, staff identified the type of infrastructure improvements and amenities that will support the interim pedestrian mall. Some of these include traffic-weighted wallards at the intersection for safety, additional ADA access ramps, repaving the street to remove street markings, ground markings for delineating the pedestrian path, social eddy furnishings, wayfinding signage, and intersection improvements. The preliminary cost estimate for implementing most of the interim pedestrian mall improvements is approximately one point five billion dollars. Additional funding will be requested as part of the five-year capital improvement program process in spring of next year for full implementation of intersection improvements. Council allocated one point five million dollars in American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for Castro Street in the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget and staff recommends transferring these funds into a new CIP project. Supply chain issues created by the pandemic continue to persist and some of, some items to be procured could take six months or longer to arrive. Approving the CIP project will enable staff to begin procurement of materials and the design of intersection improvements as we work with the council ad hoc committee and receive council approval on these elements next year. If there are no majority protests from property owners or unresolved claims for damages, staff recommends council adopt a resolution, adopting the negative declaration for the pedestrian mall, adopt a resolution to establish pedestrian malls on Castro Street and introduce an ordinance for the same and approve the mid-year CIP project for the interim pedestrian mall improvements. This concludes my presentation and staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, we will turn to the public. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on this item? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen and we will allocate two minutes. Etrium Conference Room.
Hi, this is Kritsha, um, with planning here with one member from the public who'd like to speak.
Hello, uh, my name is Manising. I'm the owner of a Dandy's Barber Shop in downtown Mountain View. Um, I actually started my business literally six months before COVID hit. So I saw a lot of changes as we were growing. And I noticed I was talking to all my patrons and customers all the time and they agree that Mountain View has become very vibrant since the street closure. I also think it has increased safety for traffic from pedestrian, uh, pedestrians, uh, which has helped save many businesses in downtown Mountain View. People love uh, sitting, walking outside, sitting at cafes and doing people watching. Um, I also suggest that we should think of the future now than just thinking of a small downtown. I think we should think of closing the longest stretch possible, uh, thinking about the future now. Uh, we should also allow signage for all businesses, uh, that exist on that stretch. We should also allow um, these businesses to use the space and promote uh, their businesses and cultural events. But my concerns um, are that the cost should not just be passed on to small businesses. It should be equally divided in everybody. The BIA cost I just hear in the last one was just going to the small business owners. But I think it should be passed on to everybody, including the landlords, because they are also profiting uh, from the rent. Um, I also think that city should make much more easy for all these businesses and have less taxes imposed on these businesses because COVID has already broke their back. And I believe if you guys promote the longest, the stretch, if you guys go with the longest stretch possible, it will bring a lot more people and it'll generate a lot more business for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
So I'm here, uh, the timer's not going down. Okay, great. I'm here as a Mountain View resident and voter and, you know, I support the full pedestrianization of Castro Street. I would agree with the prior person, the longest possible is the best. You know, it makes the streets generally safer for children, you know, people with disabilities, mobilized scooters, the elderly in general, people on bikes, pedestrians, it's just overall safer. It also lessens car dependence, so the more trips we can turn into walks or bike rides, the better. Again, that helps uh, people with disabilities, you know, who wouldn't be able to get to a place like that otherwise. And it's basically one of the things that makes Mountain View as, as a city, a city. You know, it's a great example, we could uh, set a great example here in the Bay Area by, you know, having all these parks that connect to it. It already connects to those parks, it already connects to bike infrastructure, it already connects to Caltrain. Um, you've got your Performing Arts Center, the library, as I'm sure you all know, the City Hall. So all these uh, trips between all these great places is just a walk, right? You could drive there and then walk, but ideally you could just bike there or walk around the city. And if we're really serious about addressing climate change and making the, the world that we have control over here in Mountain View a better place, uh, we really need to support measures that pedestrianize trips to points of sales and destinations that just make things less car dependent. Uh, and you know what? I think this would help fix some vacancy issues. I walk around there all the time and if a new place popped open, I'd sure walk into it. Uh, that's, that's all I got.
Thank you very much for your comments. Seeing no other members of the public wishing to speak, we will close public comments and re- recess this meeting for five minutes to allow staff review of any written protests and claims received from members of the public. So we will return at nine twenty-eight P M. It is now nine twenty-eight P M. I will ask staff if there is anything to report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Don Cameron, Public Works Director. I am pleased to report that after a final check of the mail slot here at City Hall and checking with staff at the front door, that no written protests or claims have been submitted about establishing the pedestrian mall.
Thank you, Don. We appreciate the report. I will now close the public hearing and bring the item back for council deliberation and action and note that a motion to approve the recommendation should include reading the titles of the resolutions and ordinances and that each item should be considered by individual successive motions. Uh, now is the opportunity for comment and a motion. Councilmember Abey Koga.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, well, didn't see any hands, so I was gonna go ahead and make the motion. I just want to clarify, do I need to do one at a time? We vote on each one at a time or can I read all four and then, read all four? Yeah. Yes?
No, one time.
One at a time, okay.
Sorry.
We will, I will start with the first one. Adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View adopting a negative declaration for the Castro Street Pedestrian Mall Study in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, to be read in title only for the reading waived.
Very much. Councilmember Shawalter?
Second.
Fantastic. Any questions or comments? If not, uh, we'll do the roll call.
Councilwoman Abey Koga?
I.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamai?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
abstain.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks? I mean Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Mayor Maris?
Yes.
Motion carries six.
You very much, and then we will now move on to the next motion. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, I will make the motion to adopt a resolution of the City Council of the City of Mountain View pursuant to California Streets and Highways Code section one one three one one, one one three one one, determining that pedestrian malls on Castro Street between the east leg of West Evelyn Avenue and Villa Street, Villa Street and West Dana Street and West Dana Street and California Street shall be established to be read in title only for the reading waived.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hicks.
I second that, and I'm sorry I'm not helping you read the motions, my printer is broken and I couldn't print them out.
No worries, we will make do. Uh, no questions or comments, so we'll proceed with the roll call.
Councilmember Abe Koga?
I.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamai?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
abstain.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Mayor Maris?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
Thank you. Number three. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will make a motion to introduce an ordinance of the City of Mountain View amending chapter twenty seven of the Mountain View City Code to add Article Six, establishing pedestrian malls on Castro Street between the east leg of West Evelyn Avenue and Villa Street, Villa Street and West Dana Street and West Dana Street and California Street in the City of Mountain View to be read in title only for the reading waived instead of second reading for October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Councilmember Showalter?
Second.
Very much. Don't see any hands up, so we'll move to the roll call.
Councilmember Abe Koga?
I.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamai?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
abstain.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Mayor Maris?
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
You very much, and the last one is neither a resolution nor ordinance, so I think it's simple, you can simply say move the staff recommendation. Councilmember Abi Koga?
Thank you, Mayor, I will move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Maticek?
I'll second that.
You very much. And now we'll start the vote. Oh, wait, councilmember man, sorry. Uh, we'll start the vote, thank you.
Councilmember Abe Koga?
I.
Councilmember Maticek?
Yes.
Councilmember Kamai?
Yes.
Councilmember Lieber?
Yes.
Councilmember Showalter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hicks?
Yes.
Mayor Maris?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Fantastic, and thank you, Aruna, Don, John, staff, I know a ton of time was put into making this possible, and we're very grateful for your work. And we know there's a lot more work to uh to do um to to help make this project successful. Um, if there are no remaining questions or comments, we will proceed now to item eight, council staff committee reports. Councilmember Showalter?
I'd just like to share that I attended the um uh California Water Women Conference in Santa Barbara. And it was uh, it was really an inspiring um time, there were about a hundred and fifty uh participants. And uh, we heard all sorts of panels related to the impact of um climate change on the water supply and how um permitting was expected to change in the next few years. And um, just generally, oh, and a tremendous amount about the uh, the SIGMA legislation, which is basically the groundwater management legislation, which doesn't apply directly to Mountain View, but is a, you know, a huge improvement in um uh governance in the California water system, uh sort of whole system, so it was uh, it was really a, an interesting, it was an interesting time, and if anybody would like to talk to me more about it, please um get in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lieber?
Thank you, Mayor. I I just wanted to report that we had a very good um meeting of the Council Finance and Investment Review uh this week, and I requested that we um forward the materials both from staff and from the consultant to the council overall uh because they were very, very helpful in uh getting a fuller picture of our um finances and and where our investments are. And um pursuant to that, earlier in this meeting, uh Mr. Bruce England mentioned how glad he was to see that we had asked the uh local agency investment fund to divest from fossil fuels and to support uh environmentally beneficial uh investments. And and I wanted to report that that was um due to Councilmember Maticek, who serves on Finance and Investment Review, uh bringing that up under our overall investment policy. And also uh our finance director, uh Jesse Takahashi, um preparing that that letter and the city clerk staff for um sending it through. It gives all of us an opportunity to go to our nearby cities and to uh ask them to get on board. And and our mayor obviously was uh is is a committee member as well and was supporting that and uh also signed that letter, so it's a, it's a very positive thing that we can do. And it was due to Councilmember Maticek's uh energy and investigative spirit, which we all know that she has, to really um see that opportunity and to um ferret it out, and um I think it's a great thing for us because our uh state treasurer, who serves on the life board, is very interested in fossil fuel uh divestment. And sometimes it just takes that little push to uh get something that can be very positive started, so thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Maticek?
Thank you, um and thank you, Councilmember Lieber. Um, yeah, we did have the meeting of the council um Finance and Investment Review Committee meeting. Um, it's too bad we only have those one time a year, because they're usually quite interesting. And we also had a meeting of the Council Policies and Procedures Committee. And we had a very robust agenda, I would say. And um we did not get through all of it. But what we did get through will come to council over um a series of meetings. And um we are gonna have to schedule another meeting of the CPPC to cover the one item that we continued. And so we need to get that on the uh calendar soon. And then um I also participated in a meeting since our last council meeting of the Santa Clara County Airport Land Use Commission, and um I don't have any report out from that. Thank you.
You very much. Councilmember Showalter, actually, let's go to Councilmember Kamai, because Councilmember Showalter has already spoken.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so the city manager and I participated in a joint uh JPA meeting with CHAC, the Community Health Awareness Council, last week um talking about uh the the various roles of the organization and representing the city. And that's my report. More to come. Thanks.
You very much. Councilmember Showalter?
Yeah, I just wanted to make an announcement. Um, we are having another neighborhood meeting this Thursday night. And um this time it's going to be the Mobile Home um Parks uh Neighborhood Group. And I I just wanted to um let everybody know this was happening. It's really a wonderful time to ha- see how our city staff um just answers questions on the fly um right directly to our residents. It it's, it it works really well. Thanks.
You very much. Councilmember Lieber?
S- sorry to double dip, Mayor, but it is something that I think is gonna be of interest to the council is um Supervisor Joe Smidion um put out information today that uh the county assessor's office will be working to um remove racially restrictive covenants um from deeds in in Santa Clara County, and I know that a number of council members participated in the recent information um session on that, and it's something that's uh very much in our our wheelhouse, um so more information is going to be coming. And it's a issue that affects Mountain View um fairly pervasively uh because of the period of time when many of the homes in our city were uh were first built. And so I think that's a real uh win for our county to be able to make it easy for homeowners to uh get that racially restrictive covenant removed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Being no other hands up, we will proceed now to item nine, closed session announcement. City Attorney Loeb will make a closed session announcement, and then the city council welcomes public comment on the items listed for closed session.
Thank you. Um, there are three items on the closed session agenda for this evening. Um, item ten point one is a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. The name of the claimant is Michael O'Rourke. Item ten point two is a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. The name of the claimant is Laura Gonzalez. And item ten point three is a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine, and the name of the claimant is Pedro Rivera.
Thank you. Would any member of the public on the line like to provide comment on the closed session items listed on tonight's agenda? If so, please click the raise hand button in Zoom or press star nine on your phone. A timer will be displayed on the screen. Being no members of the public wishing to speak, uh, the council will now recess to closed session and return to this webinar upon conclusion for the closed session report. So see you all after the closed session has concluded.
Waiting for a few more members of the council. Well, we do have forum, so I'll just go ahead and move on to item ten, closed session report. City Attorney Loeb, do you have a closed session report?
I do. I have three items to report on this evening. In the closed session, in closed session this evening, city council took final action on item ten point one on the closed session agenda, agenda, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding a liability claim filed by Michael O'Rourke against the city of Mountain View. Michael O'Rourke submitted a claim to the city of Mountain View seeking ten million dollars in damages based on an alleged conspiracy beginning in nineteen ninety-seven to cover up his complaints against Mountain View police officers. Council voted with seven ayes, zero nos, and zero abstentions to deny the claim. My second report out this evening is with regard to item ten point two. In closed session this evening, city council took final action on item ten point two on the closed session agenda, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding the liability claim filed by Laura Gonzalez against the city of Mountain View. Laura Gonzalez submitted a claim to the city of Mountain View seeking seven point six million dollars in damages resulting from the loss of her son, Aiden Rivera Gonzalez, in a drowning incident that occurred in a swimming pool at a private apartment building located at eighteen ninety-five Edna Mary Way in Mountain View, California. Council voted with seven ayes, zero nos, and zero abstentions to deny the claim. In closed session, finally in closed session this evening, city council took final action on item ten point three on the closed session agenda, which was a conference with legal counsel regarding the liability claim filed by Pedro Rivera against the city of Mountain View. Pedro Rivera submitted a claim to the city of Mountain View seeking seven point six million dollars in damages resulting from the loss of his son, Aiden Rivera Gonzalez, in a drowning incident that occurred in a swimming pool at a private apartment building located at eighteen ninety-five Edna Mary Way in Mountain View, California. Council voted with seven ayes, zero nos, and zero abstentions to deny the claim.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. The next city council meeting will be held on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Until then, stay healthy, and the meeting is adjourned at ten oh two P M. Thanks, everyone.